...public health district IGA. Jay, you are Dan?
I think Jay can lead us off. We've got everybody here.
That weed discussion was really interesting, so.
Well, our, when we set out on this path about a year ago, we were simply asking the question of would, could we benefit from contracting public health out? Could we improve the services by coordinating with the health district? So we developed some goals. Those goals were continue to provide high-quality services and possibly even increase those services. Make sure that our employees are treated fairly if there is to be a transfer. Make sure that we're meeting the statutory requirements and then, of course, ensure that the cost to the county is reasonable. So at this point, having gone through this for over the past year, I feel like contracting with the health district is going to allow us to, to leverage their ability to access funding that can improve and increase the services that we provide. And of course, you know, the goal here, the ultimate goal, as Charlie always says, is to improve our, how do you say, health outcomes for our community. So I think there's a real opportunity here to do that, to improve our capacity to provide services and quality that we provide and so. Let Charlie answer that question. Now, really, the big question for everybody is, why does this make sense? So would you like to take?
Yeah.
Or you can stand?
What would you prefer?
Come on up here.
Yes. So I guess the question is, why would we want to do this? And as Jay said, there's, we have to think about what's our purpose. We, as a health district, unfortunately, we focus most of our time on sickness care, not so much health care. But health care or sickness care is very expensive and it's getting more expensive. It's happening across the county. What we know is, what science tells us is, if we focus more on the health of the population, we can either change the outcome and people are living healthy lives and don't need hospitals and such, or at least not until later in their life. When the state of Oregon went to its CCO model, the change in how we deliver care to Medicaid patients. One of the things they did is they said, we need to focus more on preventative services. And so for the last six, seven years, that's what we've been doing in Lake County. That's a big change for how health districts or hospital systems look at sickness care because we're really in the business of taking care of you when you come to an emergency or you need surgery or something to that effect. And our focus within the CCO population, the Medicaid population, has been to focus on lots of preventative. As we have done that, we have actually reduced the cost of care for Medicaid population. We're now doing that with our Medicare population. So when we think about what is the role that public health plays, it's a vital role in the community. And a lot of what we focus on is population health, which is not the same as public health, but they're very similar. So when you think about population health and we look at the health of Lake County as a population, unfortunately, we are, as a county, right at the very bottom in terms of our state of origin. It's a terrible thing to look at, but I see it every year since I've come here. Part is because we're a small population and so if we have one person that harms themselves or does something that's not healthy, it reflects on us more than in a bigger county. But some of it are things we have to really focus on. We're no different when it comes to the population's health in that we smoke more. But some will tell you, we smoke and chew and vape now more than others. We're more obese. We have incidents of diabetes that we have to address. All those kinds of things. So when we think about what is the role of the health district and how could public health help us do that? Many times, the public health department is busy focusing on the very specific areas they're working on. They don't have enough money to do it. And all of it is driven around money. As a health district, as a critical access hospital, we have the ability to create what are called rural health clinics. We get paid additional amounts than a normal clinic. The same thing that urban counties are doing and they form what are called federally qualified health centers, FQACs. Lot of acronyms, but what it really does is it deals with how to find money for public health departments to get more money to do the services that are vital and there isn't enough money yet. So our plan would be to, as quickly as possible, make the public health department a rural health clinic, delivering a hospital or the health district. Takes about six months and that would enable us to get additional payments to cover the services that public health is doing. I don't know as how we will ever get to where the role of the county plays and the amount of money that the county puts up to support public health. I'm not sure that will diminish because probably what will happen is you'll want public health to deliver more service. And so more service needs more. As a health district, we can't just go in and say, whoa, we just pay for everything. We don't have that capacity, more than the school district does or any other public entity within the county. But we have that vehicle, that rural health clinic vehicle, that will greatly help our team. And after all, that's what we're here for. So when we took over mental health, two years ago, almost, two years ago in August, one of the things that we did is we were able to focus more of our attention. We have a lot of people that are interested in mental health services. It impacts everyone. And I'm proud to say that our team has been able to deliver more care, hopefully, and it's been tracking to be more effective, more people are using our services. They don't feel as, as though there is a restriction coming to get care. So it's been a positive experience and I think by and large, the employees have found it to be a positive experience. There are, Jay, to your comment about our goal is ensure that public health employees are treated fairly, there's statute that makes sure that you do that because there have been experiences in other counties within the state of Oregon that it hasn't worked for. There are now protections. And just like we did with mental health, we assured everyone that those protections were guaranteed and no time where we'd do anything that harmed them.
Yeah.
And I think the last thing is you, as commissioners, are very, very busy. You have a lot of things that pull at your time, pull at your knowledge base. And health is a hard one to get your hands on, it's a complex business. The public health department needs a lot of support. And I'm not sure that you have the capacity to be able to provide as much support as we can in the health district, not because you're not interested, but because you have so much demands at your time. And our focus is more on that.
Well, that's nicely said, but you're absolutely correct.
Yeah, you are.
I mean, that's what's real. If it's not for our team and our director, I mean, we don't have the time.
The reason our public health has been as successful it has been and we're very happy and very appreciative is because of the employees, the director. It's not because the commissioners know what needs to be done or how to do these things. Charlie, you get on it and Jay, I've got to say, before we go any further in this, because I think this has been a coordinated effort over the last six or seven months. I know when we met, Jay and I and Commissioner Winters went over to public health late November, early December, and there were concerns that this was a done deal and so on and so forth. And it's been a long process and it's been a process. You've spent a lot of time, your staff and your legal folks reviewing things. The state has spent a lot of time, Jay has spent a lot of time, Judy has spent time with Jill and the employees themselves. For the vision that I thought, when you mentioned coordinated care and when it came to be a number of years ago, five or six years ago, it just, you know, we don't know if we're making the right decision. I feel good about the direction we're headed, but time will tell, just like with, you know, not the jewelry too. But the notion that we have the opportunity to have professionals in another capacity that have the means to go after more funding to provide, as you said, more services, it's within the means we have. We couldn't have a better group and better services, but they want to do more. We want to see more done. You want to see more done. You want to see coordinated efforts in the delivery, particularly in the preventing. It just feels right to me right now and in large part because I know we've tipped over about every stone that I could imagine. We had to tip over to evaluate this, not just at the local level, but at the state level and all those that have been involved in this. So I'll get off my little soapbox, but I really do appreciate all the work that's been in from everybody and all the questions and all of the answers and all of the direction that we're currently headed.
I think one of the things that Lake County has from a benefit standpoint, certainly what, as you say, the staff of public health is a very motivated, very hardworking group. But without money, it's hard to really step forward and do more and use that talent and skills as well as improving. One of the benefits Lake County has is the mistakes made by other counties. There are some counties that have tried different ways of dealing with other counties, moving it toward other entities or something to that effect. And there have been some that have done a good job and some that the state's worried about how well it is functioning. So knowing those things helps and has helped us draft a agreement that I think Jay and I have felt pretty reasonably comfortable that we are protecting the employee, we are protecting the community, and we're delivering better care. But it's a community event and it is a community effort to make it happen.
Well, I got to say one thing and I don't want to get stuck on words and maybe I should just let it pass, but I look at them, I think you do too, Charlie, and I don't want to put words in your mouth. More than better care, I think a more appropriate word is more care. Because I think that's what we're going to see is more care being able to be provided because if the care that we can afford to provide, I don't think there could be better care within the means that our group has had to deal with financially. And like I said, I don't want to wordsmith it, but for our group, you have done a wonderful professional job and this is going to offer us the opportunity to do the medical care. So.
What else can I?
Well, I guess on the contract side of it, Charlie, obviously, the director will still be a part-time county employee, say, within the guidelines, within the laws. Do you see monthly updates first year, quarterly updates? Are we going to rely on the county employee to come give them the updates? What, what have you sort of thought of that direction, do you think?
Well, first off, I don't know all the things that Judy does and I can only speculate. So for me to say, oh, you need to have monthly updates, is that a good use of her time? Could be. I don't know the answer. I think that we need to give you updates as often as you feel you need to have that information. But we want to make sure that her time is well used and she has a lot of input. If that means everyone can be present, if that means an email, monthly or quarterly or whatever, whatever you feel comfortable with is really, I think, a position to take. And if that means we start off monthly and progress as time goes along, some of the information may be sort of reporting statistics. These are things that are going on. Some of it may be how the organizations are working together. I mean, there's a variety of different kinds of reporting that you'd be working on and it will be.
Well, I think Commissioner Winters' question is a really good question. I'd almost look at it like, let's just get, let's just get on the agenda, even if it's just, yes, everything's transitioning, we're getting remodeling done, whatever. Just really short and within a short period of time, you, I think you spoke, Charlie, to six months when we'll be established as the rural, potentially, healthcare center, rural health clinic. And at that time, then, you know, a quarterly update might be appropriate.
And so that's why I say.
Yeah.
You know, sometimes the reason I say it takes about six months, we, I don't pay for it monthly, but then we have to have the inspection. We have to make sure that they're reduced in requirements of being a rural health clinic. We have those, I mean, there's just a lot of things that go on. But that's outside of the delivery of services that, that public health is doing right now. That is still going to generate, that's still going to progress. So some of that reporting, you can get regular reports right now as a department of the county. I would expect that to continue just like. But we're willing to do whatever you want.
Well, before we go any further, Mr. Charlie, I'd like Judy to share all the information, share a little about how.
Sure, sure. Can I sit here and chat or do you want me up there? What's best for you?
What's most comfortable for you?
I'm sitting, I won't stand here. I agree with Charlie, this is a new venue, so it's, I've been in it six months. I have no idea even what my tasks are to this day. I learn every day something new. So that part is not concerning. We'll just go as, as we go and figure it out. Beth had 21 years of service. I know she met with you guys, she told you her concerns. I have six months, so it's not, I don't feel as knowledgeable with possibly why we shouldn't do this because I'm so new in the position. My staff has, I think all their questions have been answered. If this is the venue we decide to go, we're excited. There'll be some new things that we can provide, that I'm excited to provide for reproductive health that we haven't been able to do. I really, you know, we've, we've talked over and over again. I really have no new input unless there's specific questions you have for me.
No, I just wanted you to be able to share.
Yeah, no, nothing new has come up. We looked over the contract. I sent you a reply. I feel above and beyond their being fair with our paid time off, our sick time, all of that sort of stuff. I don't think we have concerns about that. Insurance is taken care of. The number of questions, the important ones were answered right away and I feel, correct me if I'm wrong, guys, I feel like everybody was satisfied with what is going to be happening with that. I feel comfortable with that. Yeah.
Jay, did you have anything else?
I have to hear what?
So for today, if it's, allow for any questions or follow-up on any of it, we'll actually act on this tomorrow in our Fort Rock meeting. With that said, I do want to say a few things. I really appreciate Jay Collins, Commissioner Sam, the staff, everyone, employees over there, Charlie, everybody that's worked on this. Reorganization and things that we deal with as board of commissioners, none of them are easy or they just happen overnight. So the amount of time everybody, everybody put into this, of course, to make the decision tomorrow is so important, as the commissioner said and over here, not going through all those meetings. So the support from the employees and the staff over there is paramount, as you said, in our positions to make a decision. So thank you ladies very much. I would say, I think you're aware, the county will still contribute to the operations nearly dollars. The service is very commendable and we need to make sure we get the services to our clients out there, to our citizens. And if we're able to enhance the amount of contacts and make sure that service is good out there to as many people as we can touch, it's really an important thing. And that's where Charlie is going, is we'll get as much service as on the ground as we can, leverage other dollars, take the county dollars and make sure things happen. Just a thank you to everybody that's brought it this far. Appreciate it. And anybody's welcome to mention anything. If you have a concern, how's the timer, if you're good with where it's going, any questions at all, hit us. And if you're not comfortable doing the public session, we're available individually by phone or come to our office. It's a major decision for us, so we want to make sure we cover everything we can.
Anything else I can add?
My name is, my name is.
I think we're, I think we're good.
Okay.
Well, if you have other questions, please don't hesitate.
We're going to make you go all the way to Christmas Valley.
I'll leave you.
I'll leave you there.
I just, I'm going to just say it one more time. Sorry about repeating, but I, you know, Commissioner Winters was kind and including me. I've been available on that the first time Dan was down. In our daily week, it's been Jay and it's been our public health folks. And Charlie, your involvement. I feel good about not how long it took, but how thoroughly we looked at it and those that were involved in looking at it and going back and forth with things to make sure we've got it as right as we can. We're not suggesting it's completely right because that would be foolish, but we got it as right as we can for right now. And I think we're working with a group of folks that have open minds to if we didn't get everything quite right, we'll make changes as we need to. So thank you all.
And you don't have to go for lunch tomorrow. You're a very busy person.
Thank you. Ladies, I hope everything will go fine. I'm sure it will.
All right.
Thanks, Charlie.
With that, we're going to move on into our, down our agenda.
Should we get Judy while she's here?
Yes, let's grab Judy while she's here. So Judy, you have, if I remember right here. Number one by a 4118, OHA agreement.
Yes.
Quite set.
It's very, and so I had Ann look at it just me because of course, she's very helpful. And this is our, the state and federal contracts for us for this next year. And after looking through it with Ann, all that we see that has changed in the year is we will be, there'll be a decrease in funds with our WIG program and our reproductive health program by about $11,000. Everything else is the same that we can see. It'll just be, they'll decrease. We have a new reproductive health program and.
So those reductions over two years?
Yes, I believe so, yes. It's a two-year. Yep, no, no. And, and I, and like I said, Ann looked at it with me and I don't have the exact splits of what they are, but I think part of it is the new reproductive health program that we're looking on. It's brand new by a couple of months and we kind of have to see how it works out. They're the ones, they've taken, we used to do funding through, through different programs. They're pulling it all into one program now and they decide what funds they're pulling it from once we send in paperwork. So it's made it easier on us, but I'm not quite sure how the, the funding will shake out in the end with that. We're looking at possibly getting decreased funding from that. And 120 pages, Ann said, that's about all I needed to say.
I see the date on the front of it, says 17 to 19.
I saw that too. Ann, Ann says that's right. So I think this is the last year part of it. I think this is the second part. And, and it lists all the different, the programs that we get paid for in there, that's why they're so long. It breaks them down.
So this is probably a legal counsel's question or maybe even a Jay question is, if we do tomorrow decide to, which is looking that way, contract with the health district, we're entering into this just less than 30 days before, is there any uniqueness there?
Well, Ann said that if that happens, we'll have another amendment. We'll have a lot of, we'll have a lot of paperwork to switch things over if that happens. And I've been getting emails from the state saying, it's, it's looking like you guys are still going forward with this and you do know you'll have to reapply to everything. So it will be a process. So how much of this stays the same, I, I really don't know. Ann feels as though we will, we will probably have quite a few amendments with all the different ones.
So you're comfortable as to go ahead and make the decision on this tomorrow and then we just start the process if we?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think everybody that we work with knows about this and expects it to happen and I feel real comfortable that people will be very helpful in helping you do that. How long it'll take, I have no idea, but we'll just answer one email at a time.
Any other questions?
Good, perfect. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Did you need this copy or did you have your own?
Melanie, you have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Thank you.
We're in the room.
Thanks, ladies. See you later.
I'll look at you.
Thank you. Mr. Park, sir, we have you in hand.
Good morning.
First, we have an ADA school update slash probably decision consideration today.
So summary of the work that was performed in the past, this would be the second phase of that, if you will. The school has acquired funding to want to pay some of their parking area and in the first round of this, road department removed the old asphalt and that's what they were asking again. It was in January sometime, one or two, this one or came and asked for that. And that was held off a little bit because of their own budget. And somehow it's back on their agenda to do. And we can put it into our schedule, so the summary is just that it's no more work than what, what previously agreed to.
And so this will happen during the non-school, kids being in school time?
Yeah, it will happen after RMC, not to take her information away, but her, their bid that we kind of helped them with a little bit for the asphalt was awarded RMC. And so right now, the road department is the biggest buyer that RMC is working with. So we'll have a little coordination effort going on with the scheduling of this and we'll get that figured out, so.
So would you need, well, we probably should take action by what's happened, so.
Sure. I'll just make a motion that we'll proceed with the original plan of assistance to ADA schools for the paving that they now financially are able to do.
A second motion, motion's been made in second to do, I guess you call it, do ADA school project. Any further discussion on the favor say hi.
Hi.
Motion carries. There you go, go. Next item is the purchase of waste handling equipment.
Okay, so more information on the, this, this was a package that through our investigation of what equipment we need to operate the landfill, Caterpillar offers waste handler specific options on some equipment and in an effort to purchase equipment that in some fashion helps maintain itself, that's what this waste handler options are for air filtration mostly for the empty compartment and for the operator, operator's station or the operator's cap because of debris, litter, dust and things of that nature. This is three pieces of equipment. It is an excavator that will be utilized for stormwater management. It'll be utilized for constructing of the new cells, which we just received the permits for. In addition, there's a lot of other landfill functionality that an excavator is used for. It is, has auxiliary hydraulics, all capable of what they call different tool functions and as well as the backhoes. The backhoes have the same options. The front bucket of the backhoes are multipurpose for being able to move and handle brush, metal, anything that's out of landfill. Specifically two backhoes, one will be at Lakeview and one will be at Christmas Valley, utilized to ensure that the containers at Christmas Valley for transfer are as full as possible. Have something to, I don't wanna say compact material, but at least keep it in the containers for safe travel. Backhoes, same thing, they're, they're plumb for all kinds of accessories. We're looking at equipment that's available that goes on these backhoes to help us with the density in the actual transfer trailers and cells, products that can help densify and compact some of that solid waste. So this was all put together with these waste handler options in this group of three pieces of equipment for 235,000. I, I did, I have wrote down here rule number eight for branding single source from this waste handler because there are not other vendors specifically that offer this type of, these type of options. With, with the cat excavator, there are additional parts on that machine that minimize and help eliminate where solid waste would get bound up against the house. There's guards put in place on the tracks and different things of that nature. All three of these machines are agreed on that we will demonstrate them for set amount of fine and purchase after July. And I'm, we're already demonstrating the excavator.
Very good.
Yep.
And so you've worked with Ann as far as on the budgeting side of it and through all that and everything, we're good to go?
Yeah, this, this, this agreement is contingent upon the commission's approval and demonstration but to be purchased after July. So there won't have to be anything done with the, it's, it'll be straight with what we did with the landfill budget.
Well, and that's what we'll approve tomorrow as we move forward, contingent upon the trials that you'll purchase out of your budget that you budgeted for.
Yeah, it's budgeted in that way, general budget. And so that part's taken care of. The backhoes we've not received, received out there, so they're doing, all these machines are serviced in their entirety. I didn't want them to receive them or demonstrate them until they were completely serviced with all the fluids, so they're doing all that right now with the backhoe. Is there anything else here? Trying to think if there's something I missed. I guess I did, I did go ahead and do a little extra research here, just to make sure that CAT was honest with us when we were talking with them about some of the specifics I wanted. And those, I hope are attached to the solid prices and comparable.
And we don't have a number of...
I forwarded to you yesterday.
Pardon me?
Sorry. I sent it, sent to a farmer.
In, in short, I, I used a sales rep that we worked with on a previous sale from Papay Channing and got quotes as close as what they could offer to the waste handling options that I'm looking for. They were like, a substantial amount higher.
You're, you, that part we need to talk about.
And I think...
There we go. And so your next item is purchase of crusher rock.
The crusher that is in place at Levitt's Pit, I'd like to use the rule exemption for adding on to the availability of that rock crusher being there to purchase three-quarter minus material up to 2,000 yards. It may not be a total of 2,000 yards. It will, it will piggyback the same price that was for the project of Gold Lake construction. So it is $14.65 a yard delivered to our yard. We, I don't think we want to pass up on, to acquire reasonably good material for patches that we have gravel road, shoulders, things of that nature when it's available to us when there's crushers.
It's reasonable.
Okay. Very good. That's really gotten fired here. It's you Kevin.
Is it?
Yeah. That would be great.
Is that, that's it? You're, we'll take care of it tomorrow at the meeting, you'll be up here getting rock on the ground in my project here?
Yeah, I guess if I have two minutes, I'd give you an update on this project.
That would be very good.
Tomorrow we start installing placement of the aggregate base for Gold Lake project. We'll have plus or minus nine days of paving, we're gonna pave it on like we did last year. Next in the pile right now with water so that they come in for any persistency, so we have all the density requirements. We'll have 10 days of that, gets us to the 25th or 21st of June and the 25th of June we'll put hot next base down for the Halloween. And then we'll back those shoulders up on the base material with shoulders and then I think it's July 16th. I have a lot of dates in my mind right now, but I think it's July 16th we'll begin to put the wearing on. So the wearing will go on the whole project, starting with that additional paving that we have through that project within the same budget to pave from Andy Hill intersection through the entire table project.
Down in the valley there. And how long is that stretch of addition?
6,200 feet, so.
That's great.
So just in conjunction, the fore service project on further up, is everything in place for that now or we still have one more?
The next agreement that'll come forward to you guys, we, I brought you the co-op agreement, which means we can enter into other things with them. And the specifics are being hashed out right now currently and put invitation on that so that we can bring the specifics of that agreement to fix the, what they're calling the slump or the slide area. And we will do that most likely in conjunction with, I'd like to do it before I put the wearing on. That's why I'm leaving two days, first of July and the 16th of July when we did the contract line, but I'd like to do that before, I'd like to do my wearing last so that my things on that road is public after that. If, if it ends up being that we do their project, the material has already been transferred up there, the fore service already transferred the material, so the trucking impact on our new wearing will be minimized. It will really only be about 300 tons of asphalt at the hall, so.
Good.
And that project is adding a little rip wrap to a location that's narrow, a little bit of, a little bit of widening that they didn't foresee because of the width that they had talked about before wanting now what they actually want. And then there'll be a 17, 17-foot lane of pavement up through there, so.
So just because we went up there and looked at it last year after they did the repair and it does narrow down, is that the spot?
Yeah, we're gonna install, we're going, they asked us to do the work and that's what's, that's the last part that we're trying to massage out and detail going, the expenses of that added work, because originally it was just, they were gonna prep it and we were gonna go pave it. And I'm okay with doing the extra work, we just have to massage the details out of that. But yes, where it's narrow, we need to widen it, so we can have 17-foot asphalt and some width of shoulders on that side. So, yeah, we'll do that.
Very good.
And I'll bring that forward as soon as we get all those details.
All right. Thank you Kevin.
Thanks Kevin. You're doing a lot of judgment on you this period of these days and we sure appreciate it.
A lot of things happen.
Yeah, you got a lot of stuff going on.
That's for us. Sure is. All right.
Lots of public comment.
This break wasn't on the agenda for tomorrow's public session. This break wasn't on the agenda.
What do you want me to do? Come to the whole thing. What are you gonna do? Are you gonna fire me?
Mr. Cooper, you're up next, as soon as Dan gets back in.
He will. Hearing's still open, so I'll close it sometime. I don't, I think one time in all the years had a little bit of public comment, not just questions, not any. Not a couple of, tomorrow could be different. So go ahead and come on up, Mr. Cooper. Dan's taken a short break. We'll get hammered through this today.
Mr. Cooper, electric program, is this for action tomorrow or is this just?
No, this is just an update.
Update, okay.
We're at, as you'll know, we're trying to assume the electrical program from the state. Just I've been in contact, we know a little bit more now going in than before. So, so far it's been a lot easier to navigate, so now we're just kinda waiting for a response back to them. I don't foresee any issues now. I'd like to thank you guys for, for the hiring of an A-level electrical, that's huge. I'm gonna get with Jay and send the state a letter with the intent of hiring or having this A-level electrical onboard. So like I said, I don't foresee any issues with them to paint the program.
I don't know, are there any questions?
Yeah, I was just gonna say Kenny, and we said it in the last meeting we had with you, but all these folks will be headed the right direction. Our program is just, I, I couldn't have ever personally envisioned it being so whole and solemn.
Great.
Yeah.
That's awesome, that's great to hear, thank you.
It's just, man.
I have talked to a couple of the electricians here in town. Michael is one that works at the hospital, he's obtained his Oregon inspector's cert to have, so he's gonna hopefully pursue the A-level at some point. And also with, who's the highest? Joe. Joe, I'm sorry. Joe, I give him information to also obtain his Oregon inspector's cert and he's gonna go after that as well. Plus I told him Michael got it, so now it's a, now it's a race.
It's competition. How expensive is it for them to, and how much training does it take?
The, the initial Oregon inspector's cert is about a couple hundred dollars and that's just going up there and if they go over law, a lot of ORs or ORs, there's nothing real, they do a little test, but it's nothing, nothing huge. The A-level electrical test, it'll be different, about $800 to take you and then unlimited for there. Once you obtain your Oregon inspector's cert, you can take any certifications as you want. So, but there, that A-level electrical is a big, a big one for electricians. Same by A-level plumbing. That's, that's what I started out with first, multi-certified from there on down.
Well, that's part of the reason that I just reiterated the program in its entirety in your shop, because I had heard last week that you were reaching out to the future, not just resting on taking care and, and providing a service for the next, say, four or five years, but looking to the future. And that's what's gonna make this program continue to be so great and provide so much service and be so viable. Our citizens, also from Once Upon a Time, as Commissioner Winters knows, to, you know, just having to wait for everybody, but having high-quality people, providing daily service is just phenomenal.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Awesome. It's a, the, I, I don't know if I had explained this before from, there's a difference between the building program and the electrical program, it's its own entity, it's its own separate money.
Yeah.
The whole thing. So everything electrical comes in, it's gotta go towards the electrical portion, so.
Yeah.
Awesome thing. Instead of getting $10 for a permit, you know, it's the opposite, stake is $10 or whatever, 12% or whatever.
Well, this is a work session, I'm gonna throw this out there, just a thought on my mind always. I don't know if there's any way or if it's even feasible for the county to do a scholarship program for people that's interested in, you know, where if they're interested in going in that certainly pay a certain amount or match dollar for dollar. Well... To encourage, I mean, we're just, I'm just thinking outside the box.
No, absolutely.
But there'd be no guarantee that they would end up our employees, but for the state of Oregon, having any real sticks certified, just thinking outside the box.
No, and that's, that's awesome because if you're in the trade, it's, it's another part that you can strive for to obtain certifications and, and I'm not sure why you wouldn't.
Yeah.
You know, no one gets, none of us are getting any younger, so you strays it pretty hard on the body. So it's definitely, you know, it's, a lot of, a lot of it's, no one knows about it. No one, they just, it's not thrown out there educational wise. Just a lot of people don't even know that it's there.
Yeah.
And I, I would rather see people come out of the trade, knowing the trade and learning from there these books and how to navigate them. The ones that go the opposite way and just know the book, it's very hard on the real world. Contractors out there or homeowners that wanna do their own work. And the whole code is, it's minimum standards, B-minus. No one strives for that, but it's, you know, it's for the layman... No one strives for that, but it's, you know, it's for the layman that, that don't do it every day, um, that's what the minimum standards are for. Contractors, obviously, you want higher expectations, they're getting paid, but, um, yeah, yeah, I really see people coming out of the trade, so I'll do whatever. I, I thought the same thing, um, the scholarship deal or, or even whatever, however you approach it. I would've, I would've probably paid for Joe's, um, out of my pocket. Yeah, had we not talked about it and, and just to get him going, um, a couple hundred bucks was, is pretty easy.
Colorado, again, you wanna pay for that out of your?
Well, no, but, but it was, it was a thought just to, just to, you know, help get in their minds, but, you know, it's like anything else.
I don't, you and I worked on that a little bit or put some thought together, maybe bring back to that.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, once, once this gets into.
We'll probably bring Ann in on that, she, we and she's our, our money person.
Yeah. Once everything's running smooth, I, you know, there's some other, um, programs, you know, even for these high school kids who have no idea what, what's involved in the trades. You know, make some education, maybe set up some, a class, you know?
It's so ironic, I had a meeting last Friday afternoon with Dr. Keteris from K C C and Steve Brown. And there's a lot of discussion going on, K C C's putting up a structural program for framing, but he, you know, without getting deep into the weeds on this, he sees the opportunity to, to do electrical plumbing, other things for training, the education, not the, not the practical side, but the education. So let's keep that in the back of our minds as we move forward. Here locally, we may have some educational certificate, training opportunities.
Well, it's easy, it's easy, 'cause I see it, uh, you can have, especially these high school kids, you know, if they can frame, uh, frame a wall, which is pretty easy, a fake wall, and learn to drill holes and show plumbing and electrical, you can, you can do the whole thing in a wall and.
Well, Kenny might add to your workload, but at some point in time, it's probably gonna be worth our while to have you sit down with us and Dr. Keteris and just, you know, 'cause they're going to look at, you know, having some highly qualified folks give them some good directions so they make the program a success.
Well, we, absolutely. We have contractors here that are success from the building program school years ago.
Yeah.
And things are starting, people are starting to realize that the trades are really.
We'll have this, you know, having this other inspector here, um, is gonna free up me to view some of these.
Yeah.
You know, projects for, you know, education, education's huge. That's what I want people to see, you know, learn, understand what it is.
Well, it's all about, at the end of the day, providing service to the citizens we serve and once again, I think we're really well down the track on making that happen.
Awesome, great, very good, alright, thank you sir.
Thanks Kevin.
Appreciate it, we'll see you at Fort Rock tomorrow.
I'm gonna try.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll try to get in, get a little bit of your money. Yeah.
Alright, so we're gonna jump down, we have, um, Jake, trying to get him going, he's very patient. Jake Greer, Clamott County M O U.
This is the M O U for Lake County Community Justice and Clamott County Jail. We, as in years, last couple of years, we rent seven hundred and thirty bed days from the Clamott County Jail. So essentially that's two beds per day for a year. Uh, we've had the opportunity to, uh, be on really good terms with the Clamott County Jail. So we are allowed to have up to three inmates over at one time to utilize our bed days. And as we are heading towards the end of this fiscal year, we're on track to burn up all our bed days. So then, uh, to the sheriff's office, 'cause our jail is full, um, we leave, have a bed or two available by, or three, my moving folks to Clamott County. That's great, they said this morning, during our tour, that there's two over there, two over there now. Those are usually reserved for long-term inmates, inmates that serve in long, long sentences, they don't just jam up beds here. But they also have pocketed children that they like to, really were deputies of, so they'll share multiple Clamott County. Gives them the change of, change of pace and new inmates that they have to try and impress, whereas here, they done impressed, they just try and pull it, so. He gives, he gives the jail some relief. And as the M O U states, the contracts between community justice, inmates between community justice and the sheriff's office, but I, I had added in there several years ago, um, or my designated, and Paul is the designated, and I don't get the habit of, who goes to Clamott County, that's the jail's position. So, it's worked out well, it's been a great working relationship and with our new sheriff, Chris Gaber, who was our plebter for a number of years, um, here in Lake, Lake County. He's the new sheriff, our relationship is only gonna be stronger.
Good.
It's a great tool to manage our population.
Yes, it is benefit, it's a win-win for them as well, because they're able to take the monies they get from us and put that towards our materials and services, or otherwise they'd be strapped for that.
Alright.
I too will be in Northlake tomorrow, perfect, so.
I will see you guys.
Yeah. Planning to stay for lunch?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a meeting. Did you say he's fine lunch, my hearing?
Yes.
There's a meeting at the school tomorrow. Great, appreciate it Jake, glad you're gonna make it. Appreciate it. Alright, next.
Sure.
So our next item is Ann, before we move on to the resolutions, uh, there has been no public comment on the hearing on our budget, so I'm gonna close that hearing. Two minutes after twelve, we will open another one tomorrow on Fort Rock. With that, let's move on to end here resolutions we have, Ann.
Okay, so you should have a packet of a few resolutions. Um, the very first one, I actually made an error in this resolution that you approved earlier, it's two thousand seventeen dash eleven. It was to allow more capital expenditures in the sheriff department, I just missed the amount. I think I did two thousand, I did twenty-one hundred, I didn't quite cover it, so they need twenty-one fifty.
Okay, well I seen, and I, I thought, well, they must have another printer. I should've, wouldn't have.
They didn't get another printer, it's just, they had, they had a few other capital expenditures as well, so the total needed to be twenty-one fifty instead of twenty-one hundred.
Okay.
Sorry about that. The next one is two thousand seventeen dash fifteen, this is for the medical examiner department. The D A has the authority, um, to, during certain investigations, uh, requires some help from autopsy services of your own state. So there's transportation costs, um, besides the service cost. Our current D A, um, is using these services more frequently than we've seen in the past, probably because, you know, things that are happening within our county. So it's a very small, limited budget, and it's going to need a little bit more materials and services authority this year. What we can do, what we have the ability to do is decrease the materials and services in the D A's department and transfer the appropriation authority that way. So, uh, that's what this resolution do, does, excuse me.
Say, Ann, I'm sorry, so we're taking it from the D A's office and looking at it?
Yep, taking it from the D A's materials and services, they have quite a bit in training that they won't be able to use with their short staffing, and then increase their medical examiner materials and services by two thousand.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
They actually proposed at one point in time, or thought about proposing, bringing those medical examiner costs right into the D A's department, instead of two separate departments, but, and we can talk about that in the future, with the way it's banned, there's been a little bit of separation there, so. Twenty seventeen dash sixteen is for our general capital projects fund, fund one oh three. With the donation that we received to refurbish our courthouse lawn and the Bell project, that's requiring a little bit more material and service, um, appropriation authority than was anticipated, but there's savings in capital. Just over the course of the year, um, we do allow for kind of unforeseen capital things that this year haven't occurred, so there's savings there. So again, no, uh, increase in total expenditures, just moving it from, from capital to materials and services. I mean, that's fifty-nine plus. Still allows for, um, I think you probably are getting briefed or have heard about a couple of, uh, projects still that are ongoing, whether in the jail or equipment, things like that. Still allows for all those things to occur too. Twenty seventeen dash seventeen is, uh, for the fair board fund. And, you know, we've talked about this one before, um, this needed more capital authority than anticipated, just with more costs that kept coming through. I am very sure that this, this is it. So it increases the total final adopted twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen capital in the facilities line item to forty thousand. Uh, they do have some savings in salaries, so again, no overall expenditures in the fund, but just a category transfer between salaries to capital.
Just a question on the resolution, I do have a terrible meeting tonight, I'm looking at our end of month printout, I'm looking at dollars that they, not on this here, quite even gave us, the dollars available in the fair board right now, seems quite a bit, is there a prediction of it gonna be down? Is our beginning of balance gonna be much higher than what was projected?
You know, I.
I'm hitting you cold, we should ask this, you're probably offline, but.
I've got a list on my desk that I'm highlighting and watching the beginning of the balances. The, what, what sometimes, um, the fair grounds use a few things, there's going to be admin fee payment in June, but in June they also pay for quite a few of their Fourth of July costs, it hits in June.
Okay.
And so, if, if they come in higher, it's good news, it helps buffer revenue shortfalls, if there shouldn't be any next year. But I don't remember highlighting that one as something that we should talk about as far as a change.
Maybe we can see if Ann, we willing to go to the meeting tonight, give an update.
Well, you'd have to, the school district might be upset, 'cause I think they have a tough time getting a quorum for their budget meeting tonight, I better sit aside. So, uh, this time of year, Nikki and I and managers work pretty closely together to make sure that as we end the fiscal year, everyone's staying within budget. So we, we kind of look almost weekly, with eighteen months, uh, looked at salaries every day, it's so far so good. Um, I think I've briefed both of you about public health and I'm watching public health, so. I'm also watching fund two oh one, which is our, um, kind of insurance payments that kind of can, and PERS that come in and go out. It kind of is an employee, um, benefit fund, and so I'm kind of having to watch that and see some adjustments that occurs.
Yeah, they don't want it to show.
Yes.
Really happy you mentioned Comcast and the ruling, a hundred and fifty million that they're gonna have to pay counties. The governor yesterday suggested, I mean, that's not, that's up to us, but she suggested the counties try and pay some of their PERS obligations with these unexpected revenues. Something for us to look at, just on the unexpected, I don't know what it means to Lake County, but I think it's a hundred and fifty million dollars, so.
And that's on Comcast?
Comcast, I'm pretty sure.
Go look, I know, um, it's okay, interesting.
Yeah, it just came out, it came out yesterday, uh, as we're sitting here, I'll just double check. But I have another thing I wanted to mention, Ann, number one, appreciate your willingness to be there with us tomorrow, but as we open up the budget hearing, I'd like to see going forward, not that we ever get questioned about it, but when we use that, that dollar amount, forty-six million, some people just leave the area or leave the viewing audience and they think we're spending forty-six million.
Okay.
So if we could kind of clarify that without getting in the weeds, just, there's a whole bunch of that that's in reserve and it's very many, or not, not.
Yeah.
But our actual operation budget that we really work on is substantially less. Thank you.
I can point that out.
Pretty good. Anything else?
Uh, we're just over on finance.
I know we did some charter communication reserve things in the past, and I felt, and so I, um, but it's all, a lot of those companies kind of are waiting for rulings on this case, and so some other things might be filtering through, even if.
I'm not finding it here, it's moved on from here, but I'm, I'm, I'm pretty certain it was Comcast, it was a hundred and fifty million dollars anyway.
Okay, I will go look at the news and talk with Dave and the others about that, that'd be very good in my days, mother.
So we'll probably leave here tomorrow quarter to eight, does that work for you?
Sounds good.
I'm gonna stay there about eight thirty-five, does that work for you?
Yeah, I'll be out probably a moment.
We figured you'd be buying us a Fufu coffee at downtown Paisley Burke.
I can do that.
You can just leave a, leave a card there that says.
No, Melanie and I, I don't bring credit cards, so. We can do that.
Is Melanie driving the bus?
You're driving?
The bus? There's a few that's calling.
Are, are we taking the bus? No.
Oh, is Melanie driving?
I bet.
Cause if Melanie's driving, I'll see you guys before.
One thing when Melanie goes, you have to, you have to be ready for the stereo and her type of music.
Oh boy.
She dedicated a few songs to me last time, I finally told her, I said, with my hearing aid, all I hear is a little bit of the music, I don't hear what they're saying, so.
Do I need to track down Baby with Z next, or?
Yeah, if you, if you track him down, we'll go through a couple of other things if you don't mind. So Melanie, let's go to, uh, non-disturbent disturbances. We have a bunch of those.
So there's, there's four different agreements total. Drew McMahon sent over the mock agreement, um, May first, we reviewed it during the work session, you guys looked through it, everything was fine. So now, these agreements have specific coordinates and locations. Um, New Sun Energy needs the following four non-disturbance agreements and subordination, or non-disturbances, subordination agreement, sorry. This agreement was presented in May first, um, neither the mineral owner nor any party otherwise driving rights by or through the mineral owner shall in any way disturb, in fact, the rights of the service owner four years after the effective date. This just ensures that, um, nothing will be changed, they won't disturb any of the mineral rights during the process of these leases. Um, there's two agreements for Dinsdale properties, and then there are two agreements for the Creek Ranch properties. And then I have a map that I included for you guys. And Darwin wasn't here, he was on the state of the country, so.
So this is, these agreements are between Lake County and the property owner, which then the property owner has the option to go into a lease agreement with.
New Sun Energy.
New Sun Energy.
Yeah.
So, this is the requirement that New Sun Energy is asking for through the landlord?
Yes.
For their investors, okay. So, just a little bit of discussion on that, Commissioner Paul, we're on that, it's, I, I may not see this happen pretty regularly, and I, we need to probably give direction, these need to come forward from our planning department.
Yeah.
With land use, and if that's the person I will.
Yeah, Melanie was some confusion over that last week, so, yes, I agree.
So appreciate Melanie bringing them forward, but, uh, I think we'll see more and more of those misfits under land use.
It certainly does.
Okay. Mr. Berman, we'll jump down to you, sir.
Don't ever jump down to my level.
We'd have to be going up to it, you're.
Oh yeah, no, it takes some.
You have, or else, uh, some quotes?
Last year, I've been kind of evaluating our maintenance needs with the, with the grants we've been getting and the approvals we've been doing throughout Lake County and enhancing our, our boat docks and our parks for maintenance and all that. And we've kind of got where we're needing a little bit extra maintenance needs as far as tools and supplies. So I, I went out for three quotes on three tractors to kind of help our maintenance needs. Because we do need the type of work that we're, some of the work we need to do on these project or the parks is, involves machinery, you know, just from post holes to mowing to ditch dig into just several needs. And I've been hiring it out, well, every time you hire it out for just a maintenance need, it's a couple of thousand dollars. And so we've had to do that quite a bit this last year with airport stuff, ski hill stuff, Eagan Park stuff. It just, it's time we have our own machinery, it'll save the county money in the long run, I feel. So, and I've talked to Commissioner Winters, we've been kind of talking about this for quite some time. And I decided that I found the dollars to be able to do that through industrial park and some other parks and rec and some out of capital. So that being said, I went out, got three quotes. The one I'm interested in is the Branson bid for twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. That's including auger, the box scraper, skid steer fork, because there's times where we get shit and sand.
We have six hundred and seventy, it went up from.
What did I say?
Nine, nine seventy.
I'm sorry, I missed that, it's six.
Okay, no, sorry, I pulled this, I just.
I thought the one you showed me this morning, that global over a few dollars, but I thought it went up to thirty thousand. Did you do it?
The, no, that was the, I hang around. The, the, the Branson only went up four hundred dollars.
Okay.
But what we did is we did a cover, you know, I decided, you know, it's hot and so I decided to go and put a shade over the tractor canopy.
That also works for safety too.
Yes, it also, yes, yes. So anyway, so mower, front end loader, that is in pretty much everything that we need. There might be some adjustments down the road, we might need, you know, some kind of equipment or whatever the needs may be, if, if we even need to. So I recommend the Branson bid. I went and looked at them, called three of them and the, the New Holland is a, is a pretty good tractor, but it's a lot more money and it's, they're well-built, but we don't need nothing like that. I don't worry, it's not, nothing.
Fifteen thousand dollars more?
Yes, fifteen thousand more. And this Branson, even looking at the, the structure of this Branson is very well-built compared to the other two.
Well, and even though we're not talking about anything but the tractor right now, Dave, as I talked to you this morning about transportation, we're talking about another capital outlay for a trade. We don't have that, of course, today.
No, I don't have, I, I did find a good used trailer that is very much capable of doing what we need to do. But I need to look further into that.
Yeah.
Because there are some good trailers out there, people buy trailers and they use them twice a year and they don't.
So if tomorrow, just a quick question, if tomorrow, if we were to approve this, will we go out and actually do the airport water line ourselves?
Well, there's some of it we can do and some of it we can't do because of codes and engineering. But yes, there is, yes, we can take a ditch and put a, put our pre-line in or our casing in. So when we do put the line in, it'll be done.
So we can get that done.
Because what we do is a casing, we're going to do the pavement and that'll be done. And then when, when I get down with all the plumbing, the whole plumbing line, then that, we'll have to have that engineered in, done by a licensed contractor because over our heads.
But the ditch work, there's a lot of ditch work in there.
Yes.
I hadn't even thought about that, and I forget, that's not that far. It's a sixteen inch bucket down and perfect. That, that right there already.
Well, I, I've just been concerned, as I know Dave has, but concerned ever since we identified this continuing major problem with the water line and the paving coming up, that we need to get it done.
Absolutely, and I was on the phone, actually, with Party Man Tom today about that, so.
Okay. It took me years to get here. Dave, I appreciate you and your crew. I, I drive around the industrial park, our properties down there, the man camp quite often. And I see quite an improvement. And also mechanical, enough to know that back when we bought the other mower, it was right for the amount of use we used it in, but it's not industrial strength for what we're doing today.
No, we've already, we've already put a lot of parts into it because they're not, it's not lasting for what we want to do. And like, again, this, we will be able to do the stuff we need to do, especially at the airport for the mowing, the sage rush and that sort of thing when, when needed, so.
Yeah, I, I have one similar to the one behind our four-wheeler and they're good for general use. But you get out into a train that we've ventured into, this will be much better.
So speaking of that, is that something we're going to trade in or?
No, we'll still continue to use that one for smaller projects, you know, especially like, it's nice for like the curves down like the railroad. We do the curves in between the road and the fence. It's really nice for that, you can just get right down there with, with four-wheeler and stuff.
Okay.
So we'll still utilize the old one as well. But when we do a bigger wide, like in the yards of the road, then we'll go to the tractor.
Okay. Do we need to make him drive all the way to four rock tomorrow?
And I said the Branson is the one, I just, you guys know, do the group, just double check.
Appreciate the words, Tom.
And I have a couple.
Way down?
Nope. I have a couple department updates, I need to get them going. I need to get the line kind of organized by July one, if possible. We've had a lot of, with mental health up in the North Lake area in the Anneys, mental health is booming up there and they're, they're really needing the space to do their job, what they need to do up there. Well, they're, they kind of took over some of the offices. Well, I want to get control of that and I want to kind of designate three offices to them. And then by us doing that, then well, the county people, the community justice, veteran service and well, DHS were in contract. And they're saying they don't come there a whole lot and still, we've got to give them a place to work out. If we're going to combine their office all into one and then I want to give mental health, community justice's old office and the two they already have, because they overrun Charlie out of his office, so they use his office quite a bit.
So can I throw something out before we actually, actually implement that? It'd be good to visit a little bit with Charlie, too, because I know there's been discussions, ongoing discussions with the Christmas Valley Health Clinic up there and mental health.
I talked to Charlie, Jay and I did.
Okay.
And he said he sees long-term him staying in the Anneys.
Okay.
For quite a while. That was the last conversation where Jay and I had with him about three weeks ago.
Okay, well, the only reason I bring that up about my man, because he's the chair of the health district. And I had breakfast and he was talking about ongoing negotiations with Charlie for an expansion of health. The district doing the airport services, so just as long as we're prostitutes.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll get a little bit up. I remember Melanie and I and Josh met Brett Brown and Jim up there for the security area. Contacted Public Health, we got to secure our IT site to put a door into what I'll call Charlie's office. It's relatively cheap compared to ten thousand dollars to move all of that IT stuff. So we'll secure the, Dave will have Steve secure the public health side. There'll be a door in there, it'll only be county in there other than DHS, which is acceptable for the IT security side of it. And Dave hasn't quite got there yet, but as implementists, there will be a monthly cost to mental health too because of all our costs are low enough, power and so on. But we have to take into consideration the janitorial, the general maintenance and those things that we do. And Dave's come up with a square footage price working with Dan, that's got this rough number for those three offices. But this will make that break July one, this is your domain, stay over there. He's met and I've met with both Charlie and with Jake. Jake's good with it and Jake will pay for a little bit of wiring that has to come over there so that he has this stuff. And it, it just secures everything that keeps our liabilities down a lot more by just having designated people. Whenever we were up there, it was interesting. I guess I'll say.
Probably.
A free-for-all. But that's, that's what it's become. And this, if we give Dave a nod of approval today, I won't be leaving with Trace on Thursday. It'll be pretty much this is the way it's going to be. If it doesn't get to there, then well, Dave, I'll move on up and talk to Charlie. It's just time, it's just gravitated, not to our fault or their fault, it's just why things have happened. So it's time to get it.
Now, the veteran service, they get, he gets confused sometimes when they get, goes up there and he just, you know.
So really, what Dave needs is at least consensus for us to reorganize that way. He can follow up with Charlie's if they have anything in the very near future. But even, I, I mean, we can gravitate back to those offices if they move out, really, very easily.
Well, I just wanted to be sure and mention that, that you, they were at least discussing it. I think you guys already talked about it, so that's good.
So consensus to go ahead?
Yeah.
Let's do it, huh?
Okay.
On Thursday, when Trace is over there, if I create, spend a little bit of time, are you here on Thursday?
Yeah.
Shortly after eight thirty, apparently, in my office, so you came over with it. You have.
And then you guys want, well, now, what do I come up with monthly?
Yes.
Four hundred and fifty dollars a month.
Yes. So for the, for the budget committee member that will still be here next year, just expect if a gentleman requesting fees for public health next year, a hundred fifty, so about five thousand dollars.
Yeah, I get it.
They won't pass that call still.
I get it.
The, one of the, the public health side, we haven't addressed it yet. This is just on mental health.
Or mental health, yeah.
So, but on the public health side, if we move into contractual agreement, we need to evaluate our board commissioners if we want to charge for that, or if that's part of the consideration to interest of the trade to operations.
You know, because I kind of misspoke relative to mental health versus public health. But I would just suggest, and I'm sure you'd already would have thought of that, is that that's well documented. Because, I mean, that, those five thousand dollar type things on the basis they had up after all, that might show good faith to hold the line on what we're going to be expanding.
Yep.
Yep.
Do you have any other things, sir?
I do, we did the jail tour this morning, as you know. We finally got the shower, or the shower mechanism and the toilet and combination sink for, for the ADA. What we're talking about is here now, we put it in, this now, it's my finger, so I might have a look at the comp line.
It's a long one for me, heart, it'll be all right.
I don't know, not if I go like this.
Yeah, you don't have one.
Anyway, I just wanted to give that a date, and now I just got to coordinate with the plumber, come in and hook it up.
So that pretty does, could you, because we don't want to have anything in there without certainty that everything works really well. Would you mind spending like a twenty-four hour period there, going through all the processes?
I don't know if I mainly could handle that.
I think mainly I could. Even if they left the door open?
I don't know, I think it's still stuck.
We get to test it all the time.
What's the one thing that you can die from if you?
Alcohol.
Oh. You might go into detox.
Well, don't walk today.
So, so we'll see that complete in the very near future?
Yes, and, yes, we're going to, yes, there's some things that, yes, I want to make sure.
You'll work with the contractor and plumber, make sure everything works appropriately.
Because so far, it's been pretty good.
Very good.
All the way across the board. It's just we had that mishap, which was contractor error, wasn't, maybe it's sealed, it was contractor error.
Yep. Very good.
Good enough. And we're going to continue, once we get all that in, then we're going to seal the walls and the floors. Any cell, it hasn't already gone. If they do overflow, it'll go to the drain and nowhere else. That's what we do anyway, so.
Very good, sir. Thank you.
So you'll have an answer for me on the tractor tomorrow?
It's on our agenda for tomorrow, isn't it? Did you need it acted on today?
Well, no, I didn't.
If it's a time sensitive law, I don't have all.
If, if you could call or have Melanie call me say it's a go, then I can call the, because we want to, I want to get that going.
Well, the only question I didn't ask, maybe I asked Dave this morning, because as I said, I just saw this yesterday afternoon. Legal counsel's okay with three bids the way they are?
Yeah, Dave's okay. I let Dave speak for them.
Because there are three, you can, you can get the same three bids from the same, if they're different. Like this is three, two different manufacturers, Keno Tractor, there's two manufacturers that works out of that office. They're the same name, but they're.
Gee, I wasn't hung up on that part of it, it's just, as you and I talked about, the one bid doesn't spell out what it is. I just wanted to be sure legal counsel had weighed in, said what was fine.
Yeah, that is.
Okay. Okay, then, you want to act on it?
That's fine, yeah.
Take it off tomorrow. That would help you where you're trying to get this to the end of the year. Okay, so I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the quote from Keno Tractor that twenty-nine thousand six hundred and seventy dollars. It's the lowest quote we received following all the rules and been reviewed by legal counsel.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And you hit that down. Just for you, we go out the normal process.
There they come, Golden Boy?
Yeah.
Golden Boy? I'm just kidding, I don't feel ungolden.
And I'll put that on the record.
Pass the probationary, you're in gold.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Dave. We have one other item, the OHA mental health agreement. And Melanie, you've worked with Trace on that and she said everything's.
Yeah, everything looks great. They said they'll comply with everything, it's just a formality for the next year for crisis services. Standard, standard things for them, seems like.
But do you have fiscal impact?
Um, yeah, it's a positive fiscal impact in the amount totaling, um, one thousand six hundred, one hundred sixty-two thousand four hundred twelve dollars eighty-three cents for the next year.
Is that an increase or is that?
I think, well, I think it's the same as they've been, been getting.
Well, I never, I don't understand all the service, I can't believe it, it's not a service, I don't know. But it says the grand total was three hundred and twenty-four thousand, so that's just for this, it's just one.
It's half of the volume.
I think so, yeah.
It's half the volume, yeah. But, okay. There we have that. What did I miss?
Um, your sky deployment bays.
Oh, I, I had done that whenever you were out of office or out of here, maybe.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
I had picked up a couple of really fast items there to get them off. I knew that, or analog school act, I didn't.
Okay.
Yeah.
So liaison base, we have. So liaison on a base, um, we have OTC, as I've mentioned many times, coming twenty-first of June, I believe they, have they made a commitment to use this room here? So they're gonna run their meetings here on Thursday and Friday also, trying to make sure that we have a tour, we may have their time for about an hour and a half, tour them out to Adele and back, is my lot, show them the creek where the flat dollars are applied for. I haven't started yet, but Melanie's supposed to help me put together a PowerPoint presentation, so hopefully I'll be able to be inclusive of the railroad, so we's getting some pictures along with our needs out on our highways. There will be time on the evening of, the Thursday evening to, now host dinner, that truly is, it's a great time to interact with the commission, so if you're able to make that, very much.
You know, Commissioner, unfortunately, and I fully intended to be there for everything that is appropriate, but as I mentioned to you here a couple weeks ago, when our kids got ahold of us, we will be out in.
Yeah, I, I just realized how many, the number I, I thought it junior, one, first? Okay, so anyways.
Yep.
And last, last week, I had the opportunity to introduce US Senator Ron Wyten in Paisley, it went well, I was able to get a copy of our emperor grant, he wanted a copy himself, he was already very much aware of it and has worked to support us on that, we haven't heard as of yet anything on that. It was actually a very good meeting, he has a way of working with people, there wasn't anything over the top, I don't believe. Melanie was able to get a little bit of time, get her introduced to, to the staff, to Jacob and others, and also was able to talk with his main staff.
Mary.
Mary, the pro, and for her to get in touch with Anne, have a discussion on bill, so Melanie brought that card back and I believe already had that discussion.
Yeah.
One of the things, so with that, that's probably enough updating for me.
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, that's great, we will adjourn, Melanie, you didn't have anything else, did you? We will adjourn at twenty-one minutes before one.